6:02, I will call the Board of Selectmen March 27th, 2023, meeting to order. Thank you to everybody joining us online this evening. I'm going to ask that you keep your phones on mute unless requested to speak. Peter, I see that you are online. Thank you so much. And...
I will do my best to stay with you.
Peter, what I'm going to do, since I know that you are doing your best to stay with us during the meeting, is if I can move to one agenda item that I am not going to be voting on this evening, if you could read under Other Business, the third one down, under the exemptions, possible approval of the Ethics Law Disclosure. If you could make that motion, because I'm going to abstain from that.
Which one was it again?
So, on page two, under the exemptions, it's the third one down, possible approval of the Ethics Law Disclosure Form. Or I can...
It's not one of the exemptions. It's below the second block of exemptions, then go down three bullets.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve approval of the Ethics Law Disclosure Form for Joshua Siple, Essex DPW employee and possible Essex firefighter.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain. Thank you, Peter.
Now, isn't there another one that... Well, he's on, so I guess it's...
Is there?
Yes, there's something that you may or may not vote for, and we don't know whether Peter will be on for the whole meeting.
That's right, yes.
So, Peter, if we can go under licenses...
Yes.
There is a one-day entertainment license. It's for the Village Restaurant, Marquardt, for use on Monday, May 22nd, 2023, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM, outside on the patio at 55 Main Street. Two guitars, one microphone, one electric piano, live ensemble, and a small amplifier. So, just as a reference, this is the shave-to-save event that I know Dawn Burnham puts on every year, and she came before the board last year. So, they brought the license before us again. And I don't know if there's discussion from the board on this. I know that...
So, is the level of outdoor music different from last year?
There's nobody to speak to that, so...
So, I mean, we approved it last year at whatever level, or whatever...
It's a Monday night as well, and it is within the hours that we designated. So, I have no discussion.
When I read it, it sounded like there was lots going on musically. Sorry. So, I'd like to know before I voted for it, whether or not it's an expansion of the outdoor...
So, the live ensemble portion is different than last year's license.
What?
The live ensemble is different. That's an addition.
So, maybe I'd like to hear what that means. Did we have to approve it tonight?
No.
No.
You have time to look at it again on April 10th, because...
I just don't want to go anywhere beyond, materially beyond, what we've done before.
Okay.
That's sort of my rule.
Then we will table the one...
Is this the only information we have?
Yes, and Dawn Burnham or Carling Audette, no one's before us this evening, Peter, and I don't see anybody online to ask these questions.
Okay. All right, so hold till next meeting?
We'll table it till the next meeting. Okay. Thank you, Peter. So, do you want to go back and start with the town administrator report?
Sure. First item on my report has to do with the fact that we put out to bid rehabilitation of the two stone piers down at Kenomo Point. This would be using the money that was left over from the Seawall project, which fortunately the state is going to allow us to utilize on the stone piers. We have a total of about... Find it. We have a total of just over $215,000, which would include the engineering component of the project. We received a total of six bids. The lowest bidder for the base, remember, we have a base bid here, which is to actually renovate or rehabilitate the piers themselves. Then we have two bid alternates for up to, you know, one or two sets of stairs. If you went solely on the base bid, that would have been DeMello Construction at $119,600, but each of their alternates were about $36,000 apiece, which we wouldn't have enough money to do. So, if you're interested in getting the entire body of work done, including the both alternates, which I would recommend, the next contractor is ERA Equipment of Ipswich. Again, their base bid was a little higher, $127,800, but each of their alternates are $17,300 and $16,500 respectively. That would bring their total bid to $161,600. The engineering contract is $50,000,375, for a total of $211,975, which is within the $215 that I talked about, whereas no one else would be if you wanted to get all three things done. So, it's my recommendation that you award the contract to ERA Equipment of Ipswich. I have talked to the engineering firm. They called some references, and there didn't seem to be any problem with the company.
Great. I will entertain a motion for the board to vote to award the stone pier rehabilitation work to ERA Equipment of Ipswich, Mass. in the amount of $161,600, conditional on favorable vetting by the engineering consultant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And so, what I'll do with that is I will work with them to get them to sign the portion of the contract that needs to be signed by the company, and then the board can stop by at its convenience to countersign, and we'll get the thing moving. With respect to the Gregory Island lots sale process, this should be tabled, because even though the Board of Assessors was ready to tackle what the market rate of these vacant lots should be in today's market, they had to postpone that meeting. And I believe they're not meeting again until April 4th. So, I will bring this back to you with whatever input they have on the 10th.
Great, thank you.
Next is the Municipal Energy Aggregation Program.
Brendan, on the last one?
Go ahead, Peter. What is it?
I thought I saw some discussion on not just combining two or more of the surplus property lots, but combining with an adjacent lot that maybe is not buildable now, that's not surplus, but is owned by somebody, and makes it a, now a buildable lot potentially, at least as far as the square footage goes.
Well, I don't know about combining it with a lot that's not owned by the town. I hadn't heard that. If that's somebody's idea, then they would, I guess, need to try to buy the town property. The issue with that is, if the town's sale is going to make someone else's property very valuable, then the town's basically giving away that value. And I would say that if you can't determine that you've got a buildable lot that's owned by the town, so you can charge your own price for it, whether that's one of the lots on their own, which I don't think there's anything buildable on its own, or a combination of the town-owned lots, you would want to sell these with a deed restriction indicating that no portion of any town-owned lot will ever be counted in as area in a buildability proposal. Otherwise, you could sell the property and actually unlock the potential for someone else to make a lot of money.
Right. Exactly.
Also, and I guess I'll bring this up now, we could do it after the 10th, too, but my understanding is that the three lots that we're talking about potentially combining are full of ledge. And I think if I go out and walk there, I can probably tell you how likely it's going to be to get a septic system on that collection of lots. Is this something you want me to look at before April 10th?
Sure.
Yeah. I think that would make sense.
All right, I'll go out there, and I'll get more information, and we should have the assessors' information by then, too. So, the Municipal Energy Aggregation Program, if you recall, this is something that a resident brought up. It's operative in a number of communities around us, and it basically allows a community to enter into a bulk electricity purchase with a supplier at a fixed rate, and then people in the community can jump on and get that rate for as long as the contract lasts. Now, it's important to understand that people who are already with an alternative energy supplier would not even be immediately queried about the possibility of going on the aggregation. It's only people that are not with an alternative supplier, and in fact, someone who's not, which means they're with National Grid for delivery and supply, actually gets opted in automatically, and they would have to opt themselves out. Today, if we had a magic aggregation price, a lot of people would do it, because the grid price is very expensive. But that brings me to my next point. If you're going to try to do municipal aggregation, you don't try to do it in this market, because you have to negotiate a favorable price, and no one's going to go to your aggregation if the price you negotiate right now is right around, you know, where National Grid is. So, that's another thing you might need to want to think about before you approach this. Also, we're told by the Department of Energy Resources, and this is a quote, "Aggregation requires administrative effort for the municipality, especially to launch, but also on an ongoing basis. Even if using a consultant to assist with the aggregation process," and by the way, most places use a consultant, "municipal staff will need to allocate resources to launch and maintain an aggregation." I don't think we have the bandwidth for this, and I can tell you that any person has been for several years now able to look over the list of national-grade alternative energy suppliers, and there's usually a couple dozen at a time, and opt into one of those, and, you know, when those run out, find another one. So, I think for the Town of Essex, it should just continue in that particular vein, because I don't think we have what they're saying in order to do it effectively. And even if you did, you wouldn't do it now, because you're not going to negotiate any favorable rate with anybody right now. So, the board wants to discuss, but...
I guess for me, residents have the option to do their own homework and opt in if they so choose, so I don't think this is something that the town needs to venture into. Peter? Any comment?
No, I agree.
All right.
Then, I was going to talk a little bit about the procurement for the town compactor or compacters, depends on how the bids come in. But we have put out to bid the possibility of getting up to three compacters. The base bid, so it's kind of like the Kenomo Point Stone Piers. The invitation for bids actually hit the street today, was advertised in all the proper places. The base bid would be the replacement of the town's solid waste compactor, which we all know is in disrepair. And so, we'll get a price on that. And then the contractor that's bidding will also bid on two add alternates, which will be the same exact specification, because these would be for recycling. And they're two small compacters, one would be for cardboard, and the other one would be for single stream. So, you have the ability here to get the base bid taken care of, and then if the pricing is within the existing town appropriation, you could exercise alternate one if you have enough money for one, and alternate two if you have enough money for two. So, that is out there now. Bids are due on April 20th, and the board will consider awarding a contract on April 24th. While I'm on this topic, I just wanted to see what the board recalled about your preferences for fees at the transfer station, which is related to this topic.
Before we move on to the fees, I just have a question. Was this, did you happen to vet, I'm assuming that the DPW commissioners put this all together to put it out for proposal, and did you vet that before it was submitted?
The DPW commissioners, through the superintendent, came up with the specifications for both the large compactor and one spec for up to two small compacters. I actually then dropped that into an invitation for bids that meets the town's requirements and standards, and then I did all the advertising and put it out to bid.
Okay, so you did all the heavy lifting on that?
On the IFB itself, yeah.
Okay. All right, so it was properly vetted. Thank you.
So, with respect to pricing, because I know we might have one of the members of the Board of Public Works dropping off the contract for the water filtration plant work tonight, and I just wanted to, in their meeting and talking about the pricing, and I just wanted to make sure the board has it fresh in their mind. I have it somewhere, but... So, and this is in your packages, too.
Okay.
Yeah. So, in looking at the possible pricing, it appears that a large bag of trash should cost around $4.30, but then you need to add in the money that we're paying per bag to the bag producer and marketing company.
Oh, here it is. Dave, do you know whether they talked about the sticker prices or bag prices yet?
No, they haven't.
They haven't? Okay.
No, they're just starting.
If you don't mind having, maybe Mike can text me when they're done talking about that, because it would be useful for the selectmen to hear about. And the reason is, it has to do with timing on how we are setting up with the people that manufacture the bags. We won't have a vote of the town on pricing until May 1st, but if I know what the two boards are leaning toward, it may help us to get prepared. And if that's the case, you know, Mike can tell me what they came to, at least what they're leaning toward right now.
Okay. So, once they get to the bag prices, have them text you to tell you the...
Yeah, and I could, I'll leave my phone out, and if I see it come up, I'll try to get back to them about it.
Okay.
That'd be useful. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Have a good night, Dave.
So, you add in the price for Waste Zero, that's the company that does the bags, and you're at $4.73, so that'd be $4.75. And when you're talking about the small bag, you're at about $2.20. You add in 25 cents for the management, that's $2.45, so we call it $2.50. What you don't want to do is have a small bag price where you could get two small bags for less than the price of one large bag, because people will play games with that, and you have to be able to count on a certain revenue stream out of this. So, we'll see if they agree with the $4.75 and the $2.50. My question is, there was a discussion at the last meeting regarding the amount for the transfer station sticker.
Right.
And I've presented that it could be $125 for a non-senior sticker. But was the discussion at the last meeting that you still want to actually have a senior sticker as well?
I did.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to clarify that.
I think the Board of Selectmen was unanimous in saying that we wanted to have two different prices.
Yes, we were.
Very good. So, I'll make sure that they know that even now, so that we can get that feedback.
These, the bag prices, then?
No, it might affect what the regular sticker price would be, because remember, the stickers are defraying only one portion of it, and the bags are different.
So, the stickers, you'll adjust it within the sticker...
Yes, yes. That would be the approach. That's right. Okay? While we're here, I think otherwise on the agenda, we have an item for the contract between EA Engineering, which is the company that's working on both the public well improvements under the ARPA funding, and, that's what this one is for, the water treatment plant improvements under a loan that we'll be getting from the state revolving loan fund, $2.6 million, which was approved last May. And the Board of Public Works has reviewed and signed this contract, which is for engineering services during construction. And that's just so that the selectmen understand that they're recommending it, but really it's the selectmen whose signature makes all the difference as to whether you go ahead. I do recommend that you do go ahead with this contract.
Do I need to take a vote on this contract? Where they voted for it, we're just signing it as a contract?
No, you need to take a vote, because their contracting authority, well, it is the water plant. It is the water plant.
I mean, typically, the Board of Selectmen signs all contracts.
Well, okay, so with the DPW, if it is DPW or sewer, they can do their own contracting up to $50,000. The water department, though, under the special act, only has the authority to do unlimited amount. At the same time, the selectmen are really the keepers of the SRF loan, and so I would say that there's an equal participation. The state revolving loan fund loan, it was really the selectmen to manage that. And so, I think it's important that both boards vote and both boards sign.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for the Board of Selectmen to sign the agreement for professional engineering services between the Town of Essex, Mass. and EA Engineering Science Technology, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, we have... At the last meeting, the board looked at my initial proposal for remote working. Here it is. Thanks, Guy. I'll take it. And so, I made some changes in that draft, addition to the personnel rules and regulations for the board to review, and I wanted to see what type of comments you had on the revised draft.
I really had none. I like that you did put in a little bit about overtime and so forth, and I thought that was good, and that was really the only thing I had.
Yep, I was quite pleased with the new draft.
Great. Peter, you all set with that?
You all set with that? I am.
Okay, so...
Do you want to entertain a motion to...
No, the next step would be, now that you're all set with it, we have to actually advertise a public hearing, because it's a change to the personnel rules and regulations. So, I will go ahead and set that up. I think we can probably do it in time for the 10th, otherwise we'll do it for the 24th. And then finally, in my report...
So, Brendan, before you move to finally, the Conservation Commission, you had a part of your report that spoke to that.
Yeah.
You didn't star it, you're not talking about it.
Right, because the board was there.
But we also got a draft of...
Yes.
So, we're not, you don't want to discuss that now?
No, that draft is actually what the Conservation Commission is going to issue to the Board of Selectmen. It's not a request for us to review and suggest to them. And since all of the selectmen were at the hearing, that's why I didn't star it, because you saw it. So, that was just follow-up for your own information as to what the wording of those things that you heard at that hearing actually might be.
So, I just have a question, because I did read this.
Yep.
Can the Board of Selectmen comment on this, or is this totally within their purview?
No, it's within their purview as to how they want to issue... I mean, if you want to talk to the chairman of the commission before they issue it, but I think it's in front of their members now, like individually, you'd want to do that like in the morning, if you have something to say about it. If you want to, since we don't really have it in here, if you want to work with me on it tomorrow to get some information...
Can I call you in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah. It just, yeah, I'd just like to make a couple comments.
Guy, is there anything you want to share that you're thinking about?
It's not on the agenda, Peter, which is why Beesie's diplomatically avoiding talking about it. It's actually not on our agenda.
It was just a handout for the board, and he was asking about...
Okay.
So, I'll work with Guy on that. If he has anything to convey to them, we can do that tomorrow. And then finally, the Rural and Small Town Development Fund grant application. That is moving along well. I'm on my second iteration of the grant application, which is out for review by the team. The real question that I'm starting to formulate is just how much of the scope we're going to be able to do for the available money. In speaking with somebody who does, and this is a local vendor, Shea Concrete represents prefabricated restroom facilities that are very durable, and they get just dropped on site. And in order to get one that had three bathrooms up front, three unisex bathrooms, and then three or four changing rooms in the back, the ballpark was around $275,000. Now, we are looking into what it would cost to site-build a similar facility, but they're heavy in plumbing, commercial fixtures, things of that nature. If we get a similar price, you know, we're going to need to determine what elements of the application may drop out. And I would suggest that you make sure that the restrooms are front and center, because you're putting up a pavilion with the volunteer project, and you're going to want the restrooms there, because then you have a rentable place. If you split the money, you might not get one functional area. You want that first functional area before we move on. And so, my suggestion is that as we see the pricing shape up, and I'll continue to keep you in the loop on this, we have plenty of time, we might need to back off of some other elements in the actual grant application. So, you come out of it with something complete, at least in one area of the Grove. All right?
So, Brendan, when do you think you might get an estimate on actual constructing the...
The YMCA folks are working with some contractors that they know, and they're doing that right now. I would imagine that I'll have more information by your next meeting. Fortunately, we don't have to submit this grant application until early June.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll have that info, and then you can make a comparison, and we can try to give you kind of a better accounting of what we think the costs are in the project, and then decide on a scope at that point.
What's the max we can submit for the grant?
$500,000. But we're talking about putting in at least one tight tank. We got a price on it. If we're going to serve the cottage and the new restrooms, the price on that is $35,000 roughly for a new well. If we're going to put a new well in to serve the cottage for year-round water, that's another $15,000. We're going to need some contingency built into this. And then if you start looking at repairs to the cottage with heating systems and bringing it up to code and different things like that, we may quickly surpass the ability to fund the whole thing. We are still looking at other funding sources. We did put in for $200,000 in state earmark through the, well, $200,000 in federal earmark, and we also have asked the state senator, our state senator and representative, for a state earmark. So, if we start finding out that there's more money involved, we can adjust as well. We have to look at what we think we're going to get for revenue out of grants and earmarks versus what you want to accomplish. So, and I'll keep, again, there's plenty of time, so I'll get you more information.
The only comment I have regarding the Grove House itself, when we talk about drilling a well, let's make sure that we exhaust all options before we go to a well, because we do have the equipment and the manpower to possibly dig to a water line, which is not that far through the woods, so... which is not that far through the woods, so.
Right, I asked the superintendent about that, and he said that, given the fact that it's shallow to ledge, you might be able to do that with a lot of insulation over the pipe.
Because he doesn't think you can get deep enough.
It, it isn't deep enough, because we've dug out there.
So it may be preferred to go with a well.
It might be, because you might end up with something that you're always babysitting.
Okay, all right.
But that is on our list.
Well, it may also limit us to being a seasonal rental based on the fact that it's, even with insulation underground, you still always run the risk of freezing.
That's right, and then you have a mess, so.
Well, and then it's a seasonal rental and not annual.
Right.
Okay. Great, all set?
That's it.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to vote, to approve the weekly warrant, the amount of $881,254.03.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, the contracts and amounts for individuals listed below contained within the 31323 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 32323 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, if you could give us a little bit more information on the, this one, please?
So every year, the Board of Public Works collects money that's paid into various cemetery funds. Maybe someone purchases a new lot, somebody provides money for, for maintenance, and the cemetery is supposed to be self-supporting, and so the DPW says this is what it's going to cost us to maintain the cemetery in the coming year, but that money is not part of the general fund. And so as a part of getting ready for town meeting, the selectmen have to vote to transfer money from, or to approve the eventual transfer of money from the cemetery fund into the operating budget. And then that gets perfected in the motion at town meeting. When the general budget article is read, it's read with some reliance upon the cemetery budget.
Thank you. Any questions on that? No. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve a request from the Board of Public Works to transfer a total of $16,599 from various cemetery accounts to their fiscal year 2024 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the minutes from the selectmen's March 13th, 2023, open meeting and executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to issue and sign a license agreement with the Conomo Point Association to attach ramps and floats to the stone pier at Conomo Point.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That will not conflict with the work to be done out there, Brendan, correct?
Oh, are we, are you saying, are we going to be able to accommodate them to set their things up, knowing, knowing that the stone piers are being renovated?
Yeah, right.
Uh, yes, in fact, we're coordinating with them. This project is supposed to be wrapped up by May 19th, and they're planning on getting their equipment attached on May 20th.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify the chairman's signature on a memorandum of understanding associated with the Manchester Essex Regional School District's grant for combination dynamic speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign assemblies.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, we have possible assistance from town council to help property owners permanently convert property to affordable housing to be listed on the town subsidized housing inventory. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, so we had a resident who must have seen the, the website posting by the Affordable Housing Trust that said the trust was interested in receiving gifts toward affordable housing, or even people, interested in people exploring conversion of property they own to affordable. And a person contacted me and said, you know what, I'd like to convert my property, I believe it's a rental property, to affordable, which means the person would commit to only receiving X amount of rent based on certain standards. But they would like to see whether the town would partner in helping with town council to develop the necessary deed restriction, because if you're going to count the affordable housing on the town's subsidized housing inventory, you need to have a deed restriction that makes it perpetually affordable. I think it's a good idea, and the reason is, if the Affordable Housing Trust was going to go out and get a property and somehow then turn that property around and make it an affordable rental, it's going to cost a lot more than it will cost just to have town council help somebody who's willing to convert an existing property to affordable.
So when he says to share, I mean, the town council would be working for who? Whom?
For the selectmen and would be saying.
So he, they wouldn't be working for him?
No, but they would be spending money on a particular, focused on that lot.
I get it, sure.
And the selectmen would then say, thank you, town council, and you'd, you'd say to the person, if you want to do this, this is what you have to sign.
And he has, he can have his own council and whatnot, but we're not, we're not working for him.
That's correct, that's correct.
I, I think it's great.
Yep, I agree.
And so what the plan would be, and Chairman Perrine also chairs of the Affordable Housing Trust, would be to next bring the concept to the Affordable Housing Trust.
I think it's awesome.
Yeah, but we wanted to first see if, if the selectmen were on board, because the selectmen and not the trust have the control over what town council does and doesn't do. Okay? So we'll get back to you with more information after the trust meets in April.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to skip, I know that there's going to be some lengthy discussion on the next couple, so I'm going to go down to licensing. I will entertain a motion to approve the three gasoline fuel storage permits as listed.
So moved.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So as for the one-day wine and malt licenses, if you've read through them, you can see that Woodman's, Inc., Douglas Woodman, has requested 12 one-day outdoor beer and wine licenses. So the board will recall that during COVID, we had temporary alteration of premises, and Woodman saw fit, it was actually a great experience for them and for their, their patrons. So they saw a fit to come before the board and ask us for a permanent alteration of premises, which we, as the local licensing authority, thought was a great idea, and we, we at the local level had proved it. It went before the state to the ABCC, and the ABCC denied it for two reasons. One, there was a concern for the ability to see, so it's, they call it line of sight. So they, they couldn't see from the bar inside to the property outside. That was an issue. The second concern was a public safety issue when it came to patrons crossing the parking lot. Although Woodman's was wonderful and, and was willing to paint a crosswalk on there to bring, you know, visible attention to the, the space, it still is an area where motorists are actually driving a vehicle through the parking lot, and there could be a potential disaster with patrons crossing. So from a liability standpoint, I had some nerves about these 12 one-days. So I reached out to Ralph Sacramone at the ABCC, and I had a great conversation with him, and I just said, you know, Ralph, the likelihood of the board supporting these one-days is highly likely, because we've, you know, we've done it in the past, they've been successful events, and I don't see any reason to not do it. Can you please, you know, guide me? Let me know that if the state denied them, we're not getting ourselves into hot water by approving them. So it was a really good conversation, and Ralph basically said to me, no, but it needs to be treated the way that every one-day is treated, which is that a one-day wine and malt is a special event license for all intents and purposes. It is not an extension of the existing alcohol license. This is not something where you can purchase alcohol indoors of the restaurant and carry it across the parking lot to the outdoor tent, and vice versa. You can't purchase alcohol at the outdoor tent and bring it indoors. It's, they are completely treated as two separate entities. Important to note that he also mentioned, like I said, you can't purchase alcohol indoors and bring it outdoors, they need to actually sell the wine and malt outside at the tent where they're proposing to serve this as a one-day event. His two big recommendations was that there is a security plan in place to make sure that there is no alcohol service to a minor, and a management plan in place to make sure that there is a manager on-site watching, because the line of sight issue. So, so again, I have read through all the licenses, I have no problems, they appear to be doing these on special weekends, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, so they've, they've strategically chosen holiday weekends. And I would entertain a motion that we approve the 12 one-day wine and malt licenses as listed, contingent upon Woodman's providing the board with a security plan and a management plan, and the understanding that they need to be treated as two separate entities with separate invoices for the sale of alcohol under the tent.
So Ruth, do we not just provide us with those plans, but that we approve the plan? Or it's approved by somebody? What, what happens there?
I mean, we can say for approval before the board, I think it's just important that they have a policy and procedure in place that mitigates any security issue. I mean, we don't want to have 18 and 19-year-olds.
So the question, the question would be, as, as Peter suggests, if they propose, if they present a plan, is, is the ABCC going to look at that plan?
This has nothing to do with the ABCC, this is the local licensing authority's discretion. You don't even need to like my motion, you can say that you disagree with me, and that you.
I, I think it, I think it's good, but I do think we should put in a proviso that, a plan acceptable to the, to the, to the, to the board.
So we can add that to the motion?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to reword that, or did you get that acceptable to the board? Do you want me to restate the motion?
Okay, whatever.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the 12 one-day wine and malt licenses to Woodman's, Inc., on the dates provided on the agenda, contingent upon Woodman's providing a security plan and a management plan, and with the understanding that both businesses, both alcohol service areas are treated as two separate entities with separate invoicing for the alcohol, with the, with the Board of Selectmen's approval on the security plan and management plan.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Some reminders, we have an open house for the town's placemaking plan that will take place in the library on March 29th, 2023, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. On Friday, March 31st, 2023, Representative Ann Margaret Ferrante will hold the House Ways and Means Committee Budget Hearing at Cruzport and Gloucester from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, in the faculty room at the Essex Elementary School on Story Street. We will be holding a special town meeting in the cafatorium at the Essex Elementary School on Monday, April 10th, beginning at 7:30. And just as a reminder for anybody tuning in, that will be the special town meeting to have the members of, the voters of the town decide whether or not they would want to purchase 31 Apple Street. We have a public forum regarding the town zoning review project that will take place on April 12th, 2023, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM in the Town Hall Auditorium. And a public hearing concerning the proposed zoning bylaw revision will take place on the evening of April 19th, 2023, third-floor auditorium of Town Hall. So we did have Jeff. Okay.
One of the items that you skipped over.
I'm headed back there.
Can be tabled, and it's the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budget Approval. This is something that the selectmen have to approve these before we get to town meeting. We normally do it now, but the town accountant tells me that the finance committee is still working on finalizing those, and so they'll come to you at the next meeting. It's actually tabled.
No, he's my, what I can do, actually, Paul, is I can probably go into executive session and wait for Jeff. Hang on one second. Let me look at the time.
Well, you can do that, because even though it's an appointment, no one can see it.
No one can see it, so I can do that. So why don't I do that? Why don't we, if you want to put us into executive session?
So I'm going to recommend that the board move into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and the chairman declare that the board will be returning to open session to adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry, to continue with regular business, that's better.
I will entertain a motion to move into executive session by roll call vote.
Peter Fitton, aye.
Aye, Bradford, aye.
Peter, will you just actually move my motion first before we vote?
Sure, I'll move the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Peter Fitton, aye.
Aye, Bradford, aye.
Ruth Perrine, aye. Peter, if you want to.
Should I call in?
I'll call, I'll call you, I'll call you so.
So if you want to disconnect from the line, and we'll call you.
Okay, let me go get my phone, and.
Joan, if you'd like to fade us to black and turn off microphones, thank you. Thank you to everybody who patiently waited for us on the line, we appreciate your time, and we have taken a motion to go back into regular session. So we've now had Town Accountant Jeff Sular join us at the table, and we are going to take a look at the fiscal year '24 operating budget.
This is just a revision to what you have in your packages, because the warrant was renumbered a little bit, there's not much new information on it.
Okay. So that is.
So Brendan, they got the, the.
They do, they have that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think that that is the, the multi, the, the tax rate recap for FY '24 that breaks out the general fund, Manchester Essex Regional School District, the VOKE, and then the exempt debt portion is probably the best place to sort of start. Sort of summarizes the, you know, this year's budget expenses, and then kind of shows you revenue sources that reduce, you know, the tax levy, you have your expenses, then you have your tax levy or other sources of revenue that pay for the, the budget as a whole. And so this page, what I tried to do was take out sort of all of the noise, so like capital items that are covered by free cash, you know, they're pulled out because they're an in-and-out. And what we were really trying to get at here is what you see on your warrant, which is we had to determine, ultimately, we have an override for the school, Manchester Essex School District and the Essex Tech School District as well. And so what we had to do is work our way back to what those numbers were going to be. And as you can see on this sheet, and also what Brendan has put into the warrant for both the ballot articles and then the, you know, traditional articles at town meeting to fund the budgets.
There's an updated copy of the warrant, that's the signature draft for tonight.
Am I jumping ahead of you?
It's different than this one.
Yes, it is, so get rid of that, that one. And Pam, you already have a, an updated copy of the warrant, I think, from earlier?
I have two copies, I'm not sure which one is the correct one.
The correct one will have Article 17 and 18 split up. Sorry, 18 and 19 are both planning board articles on the new one. These were still being fleshed out on Friday when I gave the last draft. So you should see 18 at the bottom of page five and 19 at the top of page six in the most current draft of the, of the warrant, because the planning board article was split out into two portions.
All right, so now that you have the, the correct paperwork in your hand, and I'm not referring to the wrong thing, so at the end of the day, most of the work we've done to get to this point is just to determine where do we stand in terms of, you know, we typically have, you know, we had roughly $350,000 that the budget could go up this year, just our normal operating, our, our increase to the levy limit for the year was about $350,000. On top of that, we had $453,000 of excess levy capacity that we hadn't used in prior years. So any year. So any year that we, you know, we set our tax limit and we, you know, after we set our revenue and set our tax rate, maybe we come in $10,000 or $15,000 under one year and another year we're under, you know, $50,000 or $60,000. Over the past, you know, four, five, six years, we've accumulated, you know, over $450,000 of capacity that we're allowed to tax under the levy limit. We just hadn't done it. And so this year being sort of a reset year mainly for the schools, we had to absorb our normal $350,000 and absorb the $453,000. And then at the end of the day, we had to absorb, you know, another, you know, roughly, you know, $345,000 or so. And that is what you end up seeing as your override amount is the $345,000, $345,351. On the town side, you know, we are coming in, the actual operating expenses of the town are up about 2.05% after making some changes here over the last few days as we kind of put this thing together to go to the booklet. You know, then you're looking at, on the school side, after the school of Manchester Essex has made some adjustments here for us, we've dropped from what was about an 8.96% increase on that budget to what is now a 7.12% increase, which is what has helped us sort of minimize the override a little bit. And then Essex North Shore Evoque, that's actually, it's about $110,000 higher, but on a percentage basis, it's jumping, you know, nearly 43%, which is mainly driven by increased, you know, students in the district. We've gone from, I think, 16 students to 21, which is driving the lion's share of that increase. So that is kind of the high level of where we're at. I mean, we have worked with some of the departments. We were just actually wrapping up working with the DPW on a few cuts, and then we've made a few cuts here and there along the way. But the town as a whole, the general fund of the town is coming in, you know, just over 2% with an increase, which, you know, when you think about, you know, health insurance is up nearly, you know, 8%. Our pension, you know, is up roughly 4%. So those are two big-ticket items for us that are, would be pulling that average way up, much higher than 2%, 2.5%. So it's the, it's, you know, the behavior of the departments to, you know, follow the advice of the FinCom, which was to, you know, level fund as best as possible outside of the 2% COLA that's been given to most employees. And, you know, and I think they were fairly successful at that. So this is, for the most part, set and ready to go to the budget booklet. You know, we'll probably get that done next week. There's a few small changes that, just to sort of let you know, one of the things we've been doing is we've made some cuts that what we've actually done is rather than making them full cuts, we've taken money from a department, but we've actually moved that money over to the FinCom Reserve, so we have a backstop to cover that in the event that, you know, we made a couple of bets on, you know, some expenses being lower. If those, you know, if those bets, you know, don't go our way, we do have, you know, some funds in the reserve fund to cover that, just as sort of a hedge. And the other side of that is that it also allows us to protect some free cash, you know, moving forward with, you know, but try to streamline the budgets of the underlying departments a little bit at the same time.
So when you move it into an, shift it to an allocation to the FinCom Reserve, that's still a taxable event?
It is, yeah. It's still something that's, you know, part of your expenses.
Right.
Yeah, you're not reducing your tax.
Right.
But you are, it's a way to, you know, and the Finance Committee is, you know, we've got some new members that have some ideas that I think would like to work with departments a little bit more hands-on to help them find some efficiencies. But in the interim, you know, moving some of that money over to the FinCom Reserve...
They'd like to see it off as a reserve just in case, but not put it out in front of the department as...
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, as a general rule, our departments hand back money. You know, the bigger the department, the bigger the turnback typically. But there is some comfort in knowing that the Finance Committee has a little bit more at their discretion. And, you know, so what we have talked about for years is some of these budgets have to build in when you think of, you know, like the DPW or the police that are two of our bigger budgets, you know, they have to account for, they may have weather events, they may have things that, you know, create whatever trees come down, and they have expenses associated with, you know, having to, you know, bring in chipper's and do things like that. So there's a little bit of that built into their budgets, but those aren't events that happen all the time. So, you know, those are things that you would say, well, you know, like if we'll have some money in the reserve fund, and if you need it, there's $10,000 available there, but we're going to take it out of, you know, your regular maintenance account or something like that. You know, it's never easy to do. I mean, a regular company, you know, doesn't operate on having a static budget that's set once or twice a year. You know, they're able to kind of adapt on the fly. You know, in the municipal world, you're not able to do that in sort of the same way. So that Finance Committee Reserve becomes an important part of the puzzle. I don't know how detailed you want to get into things or...
I guess we can start with the discussion, see if board members have questions for you, and then we can just discuss budgets separately. So we'll start with Peter. Peter, do you have any questions for Jeff? Okay. Guy, do you have any questions for Jeff?
No, not at this point. Obviously, you and I were in attendance at the Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday?
Thursday night.
Thursday night. Where they approved, essentially approved this budget contingent, depended on several adjustments, but also approved the school budget on a vote of six to one. So I found that interesting. And I think they, I think they approached it rationally and did a good job and recognized that the school budget is as best as it can be at this point for this year. But there was a strong, strong sense that we're looking for efficiencies that can come going forward. So it's not really a question, just sort of a comment.
Just, yeah. I'd say that's fair. I mean, I'd say, you know, the lion's share of the discussion the other night and, you know, frankly, for the last two or three months has been, you know, largely based on the school budgets. And, you know, that came to a conclusion the other night. They voted to approve, you know, both of the school budgets. As you say, they, six to one on the Manchester Essex and unanimous on the other.
Unanimous on the other, yeah.
You know, and I think you also heard from quite a few members that they were approving the Manchester Essex school budget, but still would like to sort of, you know, work together and proactively on finding some more efficiencies, you know, especially if enrollment continues, you know, to drop over the next few years. You know, the reality is for us, the apportionment is going to be, you know, an issue for at least the next couple of years. And that will be, you know, I think frankly, from my standpoint where we're concerned is, you know, roughly speaking, this year, our share of the school budget was going up about $175,000, even if nothing else happened, just because of the apportionment shift. And if that happens again next year, you know, that, it makes things very difficult right out of the gate. And, you know, clearly, you know, we have a difficult override vote this year. They were always difficult. And so, you know, even if that passes, the idea of having to potentially be up against that in a year or two is, you know, something we want to try to avoid because I don't, I don't think the residents of Essex can bear that.
One of the things, a sense that I got was this whole idea of the apportionment. We tend to view that as, well, that's out there and there's nothing we can do about it, which is true. But I think there's a sense within the Finance Committee which, which I sort of share is, yeah, it is out there and it's not sustainable. And so we have to recognize that maybe we need to create efficiencies above and beyond what we might normally do in order to account for that apportionment factor, which we know is going to be there for the next several years.
Yeah, I mean, certainly.
We can't just say, oh, that's, you know, that's the formula, so we got to live with it. Well, sometimes you can't just live with it. You have to say, I can't, you know, we can't continue to live with that. So I think there was that sense, which I agree with.
Yeah. And I would say that, you know, if you are successful in passing, you know, the budget this year and an override this year, you know, hopefully that gives you a little more wiggle room at the school level to absorb, you know, some difficulties in the next year or two because as you say, it'll have to be collaborative because there is, you know, if we were in a position to have to go for an override in the next year or two, I don't think that that's viable on our end. So we'll, you know, that's why I think, you know, what came out of that meeting, you know, I think was positive overall, but clearly, you know, there's work to be done moving forward to find ways to make this, make this all work for the next few years and get us to the next big milestone, which is, you know, either the repair or replacement of, you know, Essex Elementary.
Do you have any further questions, Guy?
No. I would, I would say, so there is a collaboration meeting this Thursday, and I'd like to, I'd like to be able to report or speak at the, at the meeting about, obviously, they're well aware that the Finance Committee had considered and voted on it. I'd like to be able to report to them at least the sense of the Board of Selectmen.
So I have several pages, so I'm going to give that to you when I go.
And Peter's back too.
Peter is back, yes. He actually texted me. He did say that he doesn't have anything, but I will recheck. Peter, so I know that you missed some of the discussion, but do you have any comments or questions for Jeff or just comments in general about the budget? Or would you like to address Guy's desire to say something at the collaboration meeting for MERSD?
No, I don't have anything more to add. I haven't been as close to this issue as Guy has for sure, so I trust his judgment here.
Thank you, Peter. So I'm going to take all three, I'm going to take the three budgets kind of as separate units and discuss those. The easiest one for me is going to be Essex Tech. I realize that that final number is about $110,000. Having said that, I realize that that's actually five additional student seats. Is it five or six?
It's five.
Five. So we are getting five future Essex candidates to be able to go to Essex Tech. So that's wonderful. I don't really have many more comments for that. I support it. As far as the town budget goes, I want to just kind of really send out a huge thank you to all of our departments. They did hear the Finance Committee's request to level fund and to be conscientious about their spending and to make sure that we were always looking for efficiencies. So I appreciate each and every one of our employees, part-time, full-time, and the hard work that each, everybody does all year round, not just in budget season. So I'm extremely grateful to everybody that works for our amazing town, Jeff, especially to you. I know that you are here days and nights and weekends, and you go above and beyond, and I appreciate that. Having our town departments coming in at 2.05%, I mean, that speaks to itself in volumes that we were able to do that. We know that we try to live within prop 2.5. That's not always easy, but we do strive for that. So then we move on to MERSD. And for me, that's always a little bit of the elephant in the room because from a political position, you're not trying to rock any boats or say things that are damning or hurt feelings or make it personal. And for me, nothing I do at this seat is personal. It's always very, I think about this town as the place that I love more than anything, which is why I serve on this board. But when I think about this budget, I struggle because I do support the school, and I'm sure the school committee members are sick and tired of hearing people say, I support the school, but I don't support the budget. So I've made some notes so that I can stay on track. I am glad to see that the original 4.53% is now 2.85. This was due to a confirmed health insurance number of 3.9%, which they had budgeted much higher, so that was great that it came in low. They did, they were able to finalize the teacher's contract, so congratulations on that. That's, you know, always huge to finalize a contract. They do have some retirements that they hadn't anticipated, and they'll be able to hire at a reduced rate. They have some grants on the table that's going to help them cut some expenses. So these decreases weren't due to the school committee looking for efficiencies or hearing the town of Essex's budget concerns. They just were purely obvious great negotiation tactics, and he was able to get a good rate for health insurance. So that's fabulous. I am thankful that the most recent changes does bring our percentage from 8.96% to 7.12% for the overall school assessment increase, but clearly this number is not sustainable. We have heard the school committee talk about collaboration, transparency, and mending bridges. I've sat here for the last three years hearing the same thing over and over again for the last three years from the school committee. Help us pass the budget, and we will work to find efficiencies. Each year, we pass the budget with town support, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and then work seems to just end until we get into the next December or November, December budget season with no changing. Collaboration is the action of working together. It's not meant to be one-sided, yet somehow it does feel one-sided. This side continues to work to support a budget, and the other side doesn't somehow hold up their end of the bargain. Transparency. Members of town boards and committees comment on the lack of transparency. While this has been met with anger and frustration and opposition, I must say that I myself have found that the district through the school committee has not been as transparent or forthcoming with my own requests for information. One would think that a request from the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to the chair of the school committee would be addressed. I had an original request on January 25, 2023, and a follow-up email on 3/5/23. Plenty of time for this information, and it was never provided. The town was asked, what are we doing to find efficiencies? We work all year long on finding ways to support the town, our taxpayers, and the budget. We look through economic development. We look at fees. We've talked about split tax rates. Our town administrator applies for grants that exceed millions of dollars, and the list goes on. Somehow, some of us have forgotten that we are elected officials. We are elected by the voters of our great town. Each and every voter that turns out at the polls matters, not just families with children. We need to consider every single person when we create a budget. We need to meet a compromise. There are needs, and then there are wants. We need to make sure that we're meeting the needs and not just looking at the wants. We've heard school committee, a school committee member say, our job is to come up with a budget. Your job is to figure out how to pay for it. We have squeezed every cent out of every department that we could possibly squeeze. We are at an overall increase of 2.05%. I'm pretty sure that that is us trying to find a way to fund the school budget. We've heard school committee members say that they would like to look at the programming to find efficiencies, maybe a structural change. Many of those school committee members are dismissed or overlooked. I would like to say that I think that the work starts now. I do support the fact that the overall increase is now at 2.85. I do support the school. I do think that we need to work collaboratively. This is not supposed to be us versus them. This is supposed to be elected officials of the town of Essex working together to fund a budget that we can afford. And if we continue down this path, we will not be able to afford it, and you've heard me say many times, we are running our seniors out of the town. And no, I'm not just considering the seniors. I consider everybody. I try to make sure that I consider every single person in this town when I make a decision, and I just wish that everybody would do the same. So I do support the school. I do support the budget at this 2.85%. And I do say that the school committee's work starts at their next meeting finding efficiencies. That would be what I would bring back to collaboration. Is there, Peter, have you got of anything or would you like to move on?
I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the fiscal year 2024 operating budget...
I would just say this.
The Finance Committee will make a recommendation that comes in the booklet.
Okay.
The Selectmen, though, that you're not barred from having a vote supporting the budget as presented by the town accountant, but you don't have to do that. That's up to the board. Certainly, you can do that.
Okay. If we don't need to vote, then that's fine.
So I, why wouldn't we at this point?
Well, I think Brendan just heard my concerns about the school budget, and...
Oh, but I also heard that you supported it.
I support the school budget coming down to the 2.85%. So I think that if we don't need to vote, I guess I would be more...
I think it's important that we, as a governing body, we need to try to move to get acceptance of the budget. And I think it would, and I think as the governing body, we should indicate where we stand. Given all the, all the angst, all the conditions and all the, everything you've said, much of which I agree with, but at the end of the day, we're going to need to get this approved, and we're going to get to need a vote approval as well. And I think we need to do everything we can to make that happen.
Do you wanna make a motion?
So I would.
I would recommend the word "support" because it's the Finance Committee...
Absolutely.
...that actually recommends a budget. The Selectmen could say that you support the town budget. You could also say or not that you support the two school budgets.
So would I support each separate?
However you'd like, however you'd like, but there's... They are separate budgets, yes.
Then that's what I would move.
Jeff, did you have something to say?
Well, I was just gonna ask you, 'cause I don't think the actual booklet would be back before your next meeting. I was thinking you could maybe wait and vote on that, but it won't be back by the 10th, I wouldn't think.
Well, sure, the camera-ready copy will already be done, 'cause we will...
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, so we will have the actual booklet recommendation for you to review if you wanted to see that before you had the vote of support at your meeting on the 10th.
And then we would just take a motion to vote to support the Finance Committee's...
That would be the final product.
Okay. That makes more sense, okay.
Okay, we'll make sure we get that to you for the next meeting. So do you wanna move to the town meeting warrant?
Yes.
All right, I'll take you through it.
Do you wanna do, I guess my question is gonna be, are you gonna review each article before we open, close, or do you not need to?
It depends on whether you have questions. I wanna at least bring, on Friday, you got a draft of this where a couple of things had not solidified. So I at least wanna go through that, and then if there's any questions from the board before you go down through the voting on the warrant. So I just wanted to point out that the last draft that you saw had a Planning Board combined article. That would be both reorganization of the existing bylaw and then some minor edits that are substantive. The Planning Board decided that they would rather see one article on its own, which would be an outright reorganization, non-substantive look at the bylaw. And then, in its own article, Article 19, the town meeting would be told, okay, let's say, let's pretend that the reorganization passes. It would just be as reorganized even when it, before it was reorganized. There were a couple of things that the Planning Board wanted to take care of. So they split that into two articles. And then I wanted to point out that we have a late-breaking request from the Fire Department, and that is Article 32. You were already aware of Article 31, which was a match for a sizable grant. 32 is coming from the ambulance fund, $8,500 for laptop computers for the ambulances that need to be updated. So that's an additional article. But that's really the only changes since you saw the other draft. I think the Friday draft had the numbers that the town accountant already spoke of, which are the 289, 165 for the amount of MERSD override, $56,186 for the amount of the vocational school override. And those are both in the ballot language, and they're in Articles 3 and 5 respectively. So those are, those have been put in, and they reflect the calculations that the town accountant showed you at the outset.
And has the town moderator seen the most recent version of the warrant? With possibly the exception of the updates today.
Not, he has not yet, but normally, the warrant gets approved, and then we sit with the moderator.
I just know that last year, we had one small typo that he caught.
Oh, yeah.
So I've read it, with the exception of the update today, but, and I didn't find anything, so, okay, perfect. Guy, do you have any questions about the warrant?
Just one question about Article 20. So at our last meeting, I think we, this is the, see if we will vote to rescind Article 33, then blah, blah, blah.
The stretch energy code, yeah.
At our last meeting, we sort of talked about this, and we sort of left it as-is without... We really don't need to take a position on it.
Correct, because it is on the, it is on the warrant verbatim because there was a valid petition of the voters to put it on the warrant.
Okay, so this is being presented as-is without the, without being...
Correct, that's why it's on there presently. If, and what the board said at the last meeting is, you would all think it over because you had just been presented with it, and if you wanted to make comments on it, certainly it would be fine to do that at this time, but there's no requirement to do so.
Okay, so I'm fine. I have no comments.
Okay. So, Peter, are you...
I don't...
Okay.
I don't think you have the latest copy.
You don't.
But I have...
Yeah, because we had, we had brought it here, and I had forgotten that you would be remote.
Right.
The only additions, though, Peter, just so you know, is Article 18 and 19, which just separates the zoning bylaw changes, so that one is...
Reorg is 18, and substantive is 19.
I moved everything down, 'cause I'm, I have the wrong articles for what we've been talking about. And there was an addition, you said Number 32 or something?
32 is, which is, was inserted right after the Fire Department grant match. There is now an $8,500 article for a...
Two laptop computers.
Yeah, two laptop computers.
So in that one, Peter, the Article 32 is the, Fire Department's actually gonna take the $8,500 from their existing ambulance fund and just transfer it over to purchase the two laptops? They just need a town meeting vote to be able to do that?
Good, good. But I have no questions on the version that I do have, which is, just doesn't have those changes you...
Right, but those are the only changes, so if you have, unless you had questions on those, there's no difference.
Are you more comfortable abstaining from these votes, Peter?
I think I will, yes.
Okay. So then, Guy, it's just gonna be you and I, so I'm gonna just make the motions, and you can move them. So I will...
So just a question, can I move in second, technically?
You don't need a second, 'cause we're just the two of us.
One...
Need a second.
No, you don't need, 'cause there's only two.
Got it.
So I will make a motion to vote to hold annual town meeting on Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 7:30 PM at the Essex Elementary School.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to open the warrant for the May 1st, 2023 annual town meeting and May 8th, 2023 annual town election.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to add articles for the May 1st, 2023 annual town meeting per the draft warrant presented at this meeting or as revised, which is attached here too.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to add ballot language for the May 8th, 2023 annual town election and to transmit the ballot questions to the town clerk.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to close the warrant.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to approve the warrant.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to sign the warrant at or outside of a meeting if revisions are necessary.
And they aren't, so it would be now.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And obviously, I abstain to all those votes.
We'll let the record reflect that you've abstained from all the votes.
Peter, do you wanna swing by and sign the warrant now that it's been voted by the board, or you'd rather leave it blank?
I can sign it, sure.
So tomorrow, if you wanna swing by in the morning, then we can get it off to the town clerk.
Okay.
So all we have remaining is actually an 8:00 PM appointment. And because of its nature, I am gonna wait until 8 o'clock, so we have nine minutes. So for everybody in the audience waiting, it is an 8 o'clock appointment with the Conservation Commission to review the proposed conservation bylaw with the board. And because it is an appointment time, and there are probably members of the public that wanna hear this discussion, I am gonna pause until we get to 8 o'clock. Joan, if you'd like to put us on mute? Sure, thank you. Excellent.
I just want, before this gets started, I just wanted to point out that the version of the bylaw that the Selectmen have, after it was printed up on Friday, there were some minor typographical errors, but no substantive changes.
The bylaw, the bylaw that you should have currently has been through the final Grammarly and Microsoft edits to pull out all...
Right.
...tiny inconsistencies that if you read it about 4,000 times, your mind just skips over those. We've all...
We, we get these packets on Friday, and we got all of those new corrections via email today. So we've seen the version, but the one in our hand has a couple of typos, meaning the printed versions.
The previous one.
Okay, right.
Yeah, but we do have the corrected one.
I'm just pointing out what they have.
Yeah.
So we did submit the bylaw with a cover letter to the Selectmen about 10 days ago. And we wanted to just point out that Essex is the only town in the great marsh ecosystem in the ACEC that doesn't have its own wetlands protection amended by law by the town. All our neighboring towns, Gloucester, Ipswich, Newbury, Rowley, we all share the same ecosystem. They have broader protections than we do. The legislation that we want to put before the town, some folks may not think it goes far enough because we don't really enact any regulations per se that expand the board's authority to regulate more land or to create regulations within the existing buffer zone. But what we do try to do is establish a framework for moving forward with community-driven changes that would be reflected in the bylaw. So some folks will think we didn't go far enough, and some folks may think we went too far, but that probably means we did the right thing, or we're gonna try to do the right thing. Just to highlight, we're gonna try to make sure that it's clear what exemptions and exceptions are available to residents that add more clarity to what activities are permitted in the, in the resource, in the, in the wetlands protection bylaw. One of the things that I think that is gonna be important will be, having heard the town's budget issues, we hope to start collecting fees with our applications, just to bring us in line with other boards. Every board that you go to in town, whether you're putting the septic system or you're filing for building permit, you need to attach a check. And we're gonna require the same thing. So we'd like to have some measure of revenue stream coming in from our board to help support our board's activities. So I know we have a budget of about $30,000 or $31,000. And we're not gonna raise any kind of money near that, but if we could pick up another $2,500 or $5,000 a year in fees with applications, then we consider that to be a contribution to the town and to free up cash for other boards, or as it may be. And then we also wanna have the ability, on the other side, if we find that folks are being recalcitrant and not doing the right thing when our enforcement orders come out. Right now, we have no leverage at all. We can only go to the state, and the state will only fine somebody if it's a truly egregious matter, and the state fines start at $25,000.
Cliff, hang on one second. Kevin, thank you so much for joining us. Will you please do me a favor and put yourself on mute? And then we'll certainly acknowledge you, but we're getting lots of feedback in the room. Thanks, Kevin. Sorry, Cliff.
Is that Kevin Cook?
It is Kevin. He just dialed in. I can see that he's there, but that was a little feedback from him.
Where was I? Oh, yes.
The state.
Fees.
Right. We were saying that the DEP, the DEP has the ability to fine violators, but their fines start at $25,000. And it's gotta be pretty serious for the DEP to get involved. But we'd like to have some leverage, however small it might be, against folks who feel that our board has no enforcement authority other than to send an enforcement order. And in failing that, we have to take them to court if they fail the enforcement order. But fines can be the interim step between actually hauling someone into court for ignoring an enforcement order. And another key item we wanna include is increasing the amount of public participation at our hearings. Very often, folks in town see something happen nearby, and they wonder why they didn't get notified, how come there wasn't a hearing, or why didn't they know about it? So we wanna expand the, a butter notification from 100 feet to 300 feet. And our intent there is to bring more voices to the table. Everybody in this small town is a stakeholder. And right now, 100 feet is only 100 feet. By expanding to 300 feet, we hopefully increase the diversity of voices. And also through that process, our board will hear what the community's concerns are about the environment, and will help us going forward in the future if folks show up, if people show up and let us know what is needed to protect what they feel are their interests. It will give the board today and boards in the future more of a temperature reading, a yardstick on how to gauge future regulations if they're so needed by the town. So we're hoping the 300-foot notification to a butters when there's a hearing for notification of intent brings more folks to the table. We get to hear more voices. People feel heard. And so we think that's a critical item as well. Kevin's also rung in if he wants to add anything?
Yes, so thank you. That was co-chair Cliff Agaloff with the Conservation Commission, and we also have co-chair Kevin Cook joining us by phone.
Thanks, Ruth. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay, Kevin. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, look, I think Cliff covered it. I don't know if there are any specific questions. I think our letter kind of hit the rationale and kind of what motivated us to go down this road to begin with. But I think Cliff covered it, and we're excited to, you know, hopefully get this through and get more people involved and hear more from the residents and what they're looking for in next steps.
Thank you so much, Kevin. I don't have any questions. I myself have been attending the Conservation Commission meetings. Unfortunately, not all of the bylaw meetings, but, so I've been kind of up on what's been going on. I've gotten your iterations of the bylaw. I've been reading through them and seeing the changes, so I'm quite pleased with the final product. Guy, do you have any questions?
Just actually, two quick questions. One has to do, I mean, very, under the jurisdiction. Are these, are the areas covered in the description that in our bylaws more inclusive or than the state, than the law, the state law? What is covered?
The jurisdiction we have is in parallel with the state.
Parallel.
Yeah, we have, we have not claimed any new jurisdiction.
Okay.
And the board was careful about that. First of all, we claim new jurisdiction, it's a lot more work for the board. If we add more regulations, or we, there was a suggestion we increase the buffer zone to 200 feet. That would include probably then three-quarters of the residents in town.
Yeah.
So we all...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're not...
We're happy with our jurisdiction the way it is. If the community feels we need more jurisdiction, then I'd be happy to hear about it.
The other question has to do with the fines. What's the process for who rules? Who decides that there's been an infraction and what defines... What's the process for who rules, who decides that there's been an infraction and what the fine will be? And what redress does the person who's being fined have under normal conditions short of, I don't know?
Yeah, quite honestly, because we've never been able to levy fines or have a strong enforcement action that's backed up by the threat of a fine, should we be in a position going forward when someone's had an egregious violation and they've ignored an enforcement order? We're going to surely run it past town council and firmly understand, you know, what our ability is to levy fines and where and we go very cautiously about going about that.
Is there an established procedure already in place, Brendan, that would apply to this situation?
Well, the way the proposed bylaw is worded presently, it's by noncriminal disposition, which means the Conservation Commission, after they consulted with council or with their agent or with both, would come to some conclusion that there is a violation. And then there would be a letter sent out to the owner of the property, and the first offense would be $100, as it says in the
So what redress would the person have?
So if the person does not agree with that, they would not simply just pay the fine, and they would end up probably in front of the clerk magistrate in district court explaining why. It's like a traffic ticket. I'm not going to pay that. I don't think I was speeding. Okay, well, it doesn't just go away. You have to go and visit the clerk magistrate.
So the determination is without, possibly without a hearing or an opportunity for the person to respond?
There, I believe their opportunity would be to present their case in a court hearing. This is not a high-level thing.
It would just seem, okay.
Typically, the way our board conducts business is we send an enforcement order. Usually, people comply. If we have an issue where there's somebody who is not complying, that enforcement order will be followed up with the threat or the imposition of a fine. I don't think it's going to be our first thing out of the gate if we find that there's an issue. It's not, someone's not going to get a letter saying, you know, you owe us $100. You better stop doing what you're doing. It's we first, you better stop doing what you're doing, and if not, then we're going to fine you $100. I mean, so, or whatever the fine, you know, the fines do escalate, I believe. So, you know, we live in a small town. Everybody's a neighbor. We don't want to be
Right. No, 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 I get it. But also, if you're, if the board, it seems that the board can unilaterally determine that there's been a violation without any sort of open hearing or consultation.
Oh, I think they would have to go in, it's all based on the physical environment, right? So they'd have to go in the field
Sure.
and look at the situation, and if the evidence in the field suggests that there is a violation, or if it's a failure to properly file something, that should be obvious to them. Somebody can still disagree, and they have the ability to say, I'm not paying the fine.
It just seems that the only redress to a disagreement is to take it to court. I would have hoped that there would be some kind of review process.
But it's not something where the resident would have to file some kind of a suit. Because if the ticket isn't paid, then they're going to, they're going to, we're talking about the fine now. They're going to end up like you would with a speeding ticket. No, I'd rather go talk to the clerk magistrate, thank you very much. And then somebody from the commission would be at the district court as well to explain their side, and the clerk magistrate would dispose of the matter. When it comes down to correcting whatever the violation is, irrespective of the fine, if the commission feels that it's egregious enough, the commission will approach the selectmen for access to counsel. And that's where the commission would actually perhaps work with counsel to alleviate the situation in a more direct manner.
Brendan, this is Kevin. I speak to that point when you're done, and apologies if I interrupt.
No, go ahead, Kevin.
So I just want to address, you know, the notion or, you know, the decision-making process and the way the Conservation Commission works in that, you know, we already have the authority and the responsibility to make determinations of whether the laws are being complied with or not under our existing charter. We are, you know, the arbiters of the facts and issue determinations, you know, every three weeks on Tuesday night, including making determinations on whether our enforcement orders or, you know, there has been an enforcement issue, somebody not complying with, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act or the associated regulations. And the recourse and process with which we would, you know, administer and then, you know, levy fines if they were appropriate would really be the same process that we currently have. It's another tool as an enforcement mechanism in addition to, you know, issuing a cease and desist order or, you know, a commissioner under the kind of the RAC regulations, if you will, under the state level, can issue an enforcement order on the spot, which would then be ratified by a full vote of the commission at a hearing. And I think the process here would be similar. So I don't think that the presence of, you know, issuing a $100 fine is really a departure from the process that we already have in place on enforcement issues.
Guy, I do appreciate the question. Helps us anticipate what we might be hearing at a town meeting as well.
Yeah. No, that's fine. So just the final question. So any decision of a determination of a fine would be made by the commission in an open meeting?
Absolutely.
And there'd be an opportunity for the person, for the individual who's being fined or called to respond before, you know, in a, to the allegation, I guess?
I think that's an obligation of our
I just want to make sure
I think the board is obligated to some level of due process that if there is a contested issue on an action on a property, if there's a violation that appears to be, you know, at a level where we would be issuing an enforcement order, we would definitely engage the property owner long before our fine would be instituted, unless it was something like we go out to a site
Oh, right.
and there's a building going up that nobody knew about or whatever. But, I mean, generally, when we engage with an owner, it's a constructive type of engagement. Our motto is we want to help people get to yes. We want to make projects doable. We often say that the environment and development can go hand in hand. We, you know, we don't want to strong-arm anybody, but there's a time and place for fines when they're needed. It's like a last resort and not a first option.
Okay.
Thanks, Cliff. Peter, do you
I just want to applaud, yeah, I just want to applaud the commission for undertaking this. It's important to protect our wet natural resources. My question is, does this now set you up, having, if it does pass, having this so that you can expand your jurisdiction if so needed?
Yeah, we give ourselves, through the public hearing process, if we want to promulgate regulations, we would do that through the public hearing process.
Okay.
So we're giving ourselves the ability to respond and create a performance standard or any other type of standard that we think is necessary, sort of as we go. But there's nothing in this bylaw that in particular sets a performance standard.
Right, at this point, yeah, so
We're going to create a process and a platform and a means to create regulations in response to whatever the board happens to be seeing as a need at the time or from its accumulated, or from its accumulated experience.
Yeah, but that go above and beyond the basic DEP standard?
Yes, yes. And we did have some, we did have some internal debate about creating a no-build zone or a stormwater management zone, which essentially would be a zone in the bottom 25 feet of the buffer zone. We talked about other types of overlay regulations and restrictions, and we really thought better of it. We want to pass a bylaw that's workable, and then if needed, we can amend it with future town meeting votes or if we need to create a regulation to create a performance standard, we're going to give ourselves the ability to do that through the public hearing process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Kevin, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing further. Thank you for the time and the ability to participate telephonically. Thank you.
I want to thank you both for your volunteerism and serving our community. We all appreciate that. And thank you for the hard work on the bylaw. We do appreciate that, so
Do you want a paper copy?
We do have paper copies. Yes, we do. And we'll see you on April 10th at special town meeting for 31 Apple Street.
Yes, absolutely. And you have the latest proofed copy that's clean?
Yes, yep.
Great. Well, thanks for having us. We do appreciate the opportunity to speak to the community and meet with the board. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
So this is the portion of the evening where we entertain public comment. So as a reminder, when we ask people from the public if they'd like to make comment, we ask you to state your name and your address for the record, and that's it? Is there anybody online with us this evening that has any public comment? Okay. Anybody in the room with public comment? Sir, if you'd like to approach the podium and just your name and address? You do need to speak probably within four inches of the microphone to be heard.
How's that?
Perfect.
Great. Yeah, my name is Bob Blair. I live at 39 Kidderi Avenue in Rowley, Massachusetts. I am the current president of something called the Cape Ann Rowing Club. And the Cape Ann Rowing Club has been running an event in the town of Essex for almost four decades now, 38 or 39 years, called the Essex River Race. And we love this event. We love the Essex River. We've probably brought something on the order of between 8,000 and 10,000 participants to Essex over the years that we've been running the event. The event has a perfect safety record, and I would say that we pride ourselves on having worked closely with the town over many, many years. The reason I'm here tonight is just to clear up what appears to be some misunderstanding in an email that I received from the chairman of the selectmen, Ruth Perrine. Is that, that's you, ma'am?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, great. So we did have an event here last year, but before that, I just want to, you know, back up. For well over 30 years, this event was held at the Town of Essex Boat Ramp and without incident and without any problem. We decided, because the event was getting big and it does present logistical problems on the morning of the race with traffic and people coming and going, that when the Rivers Bend opened up a few years ago, we approached them about shifting our event over to their property to take it out of the mainstream flow of traffic, and that's worked quite well. Now, last year, they were doing construction, and their place was all tore up and not available. So I did come to the town, to the town manager's office, and discussed our situation and that we'd like to come back and use the town ramp again last year, which we did do, and we operated with the Shipbuilding Museum, and we made a donation to them with that. We coordinated our event with the Harbor Master, as we always do, and we hired a police detail, which we always do. So there's some indication, and I don't know if it's just a misunderstanding, that you think somehow we came to town last year without any advance notice or coordination with public safety. We were not operating on Spring Street, so I don't know. You made some reference to cars speeding on that road, and we weren't on that road last year. I don't know what's going on right now. I know that the date that we had intended to want to come back here, the 20th, you all seem to have some other event in mind that you're spending a fair amount of money to promote, and that maybe we don't match up well with that event. So we're right now looking at trying to move our event to May 6th, which is two weeks earlier. The Essex River is a public waterway. There's no permit requirement. We do file permit applications for marine events with the United States Coast Guard, not only for the Essex River Race, but also for the Blackburn Challenge, which is a 20-mile race around Cape Ann, a much bigger event. So I'm just here to say that, you know, we, as the Cape Ann Rowing Club, comprised of people that live in all of the surrounding towns, including the Town of Essex. We attract people. You made reference to there were out-of-state license plates. We do attract people from outside of this area, outside of the state, and really throughout all of New England. Our Cape Ann Club events, the Blackburn Challenge particularly, we attract people from all over the world. We believe that this event highlights the natural beauty of Essex River, of the estuary. We are an environmentally friendly, human-powered event, and we feel that we represent some of the best of what this region has to offer. And we want to continue coming here. It does seem that maybe there's either a misunderstanding about what this race is all about. We are here to promote the Town of Essex, not to detract from the Town of Essex. If there are things that we need to do to improve our event, if you have some feedback for us, that's wonderful. You know, we're happy to hear it. We are here to work, as we always have, as part of the community. So that, I'm just here just to say that, you know, we are a contributor. We are not a detractor from the Town of Essex. We have, we bring business, we bring tourism, we bring people, we celebrate the history and the beautiful ecology of the estuary. So I hope that going forward, if, whatever, if there's any questions that, you know, we're able to talk these things out. And we look forward to having many, many more years of racing here on the Essex River.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Is there any other public comment in the room? Is there any further public comment on the phone before I end the meeting? If there's any comment on the phone, please unmute your microphone, identify yourself, name and address.
Hi, Ruth. It's Jody here, Spring Street.
Hi, Jody. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good.
I just wanted to comment on the Essex River Race. I did reach out to the Cape Ann Rowing Club as EDC chair on January 5th to see if they were holding an event because nothing was posted, and I didn't receive a reply from them. I specifically reached out because a river race on the weekend that we're holding our off-season event wouldn't be compatible. So I think that in the best interest of the town, the parking is limited, and our boat ramp is now a resident-only boat ramp. I think that the best thing that the River Race could do if they want to continue in Essex is to move back to Rivers Bend. The other thing that I think would make the event more successful for Essex is the event, the event, the race is sort of all-encompassing. You pay a fee, you come early in the morning, you race, you get, you know, some type of cookout or food, and, you know, they serve alcohol or they don't, they have music or they don't, and then those people get in their cars and they leave. I think what would be more advantageous to Essex would be if the racers and the, you know, the participants and the people who come to watch didn't have this ready-made event for them afterwards, and then they would disperse to our local businesses and frequent them. Just a suggestion, but I think absolutely I had tried to ward off this exact thing by reaching out to them in January. by reaching out to them in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Is there any further public comment on the phone?
This is Tina.
Hi, Tina. How are you?
I'm fine. I, I'm a little confused. He, I'm sorry, I didn't get his name, but he said he was moving the event to May 6th. So does that include using our town ramp?
So Tina, that was Bob Blair with Cape Ann Rowing Club.
Thank you.
And he was just making public comments that he had suggested that he could move his event from May 20th to May 6th. Nothing has been approved. It was just a suggestion. And yes, the suggestion is that they would still like to use the town ramp.
Because I, I know we've had lots of discussions about the town ramp and keeping it for the town and I, I kind of want to go along that line. Let's hold our ground, keeping the ramp for the public, for the town residents.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any further comment? Okay. Hearing no other comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:28 PM.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.